All right, welcome to January 9th, 2024. Almost. All right. Welcome to January 9th, 2024 City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, as the only item at this moment is going to be closed session, we'll now call for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the City Council, my name is Jim Mosher. I want to speak to you this afternoon about the public's ability to trust its government, about promises made and forgotten, and about sloppy administration. In short, I want to talk to you about what happened at the Planning Commission meeting last Thursday. If you read the staff agenda report, you will know that the only item on that was a situation about whether it is allowed to keep chickens on single-family residential lots in Santa Ana Heights. Santa Ana Heights is a special area of our city with a unusually rural character, represented by all seven of you that was annexed into the city from the county. The promise that was made and apparently not remembered is that when the member, people in Santa Ana Heights voted to be annexed, they were promised that their zoning and the character of their neighborhood would be preserved as it had been under the county. In 2012, the City Council heard a presentation prompted by a controversy over keeping chickens in Corona del Mar, and the council was assured that Santa Ana Heights was the one and only area of Newport Beach in which you were allowed to keep chickens. Yet, about two years ago, a resident there was told by Animal Control and apparently confirmed by our Planning Division that you were not allowed to keep chickens there. Sloppy administration includes the fact that they were then told, that resident, that they had to hold what, had to apply for what is called a reasonable accommodation to allow something that was not allowed by our zoning code, even though it is. The zoning code is clear that those hearings have to be publicly noticed and available for the public to participate in. Yet that meeting was held without notice, secretly, closed to the public. I know about it only because it came to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission was then told again that the people in Santa Ana Heights, their rights that they had had under the county expired one year after annexation, which again is untrue. All of this, I think, is a problem. All of it, I think, is something that you, as the council, could correct. There is a bigger issue here that I noticed people in Santa Ana Heights, which again, all of you represent, were upset about the city's proposal to put housing on a portion of the golf course there. The golf course again is in an area that the county, that the city on annexation promised to keep with the same zoning that it had previously. And I wonder if we remember that we made that promise and how we're going to get their permission to change that zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Ida Wolf, and I have, I'd like these passed out. I have been here before on the Ben Carlson statue. These are being passed out to the businesses and to people in the city of Newport. I am here on the statue that never had a vote when they put it in. And they made a business, and they sold shirts and bumper stickers. And Ben Carlson, as the letter reads, is not a hero. And his human remains are inside the statue, so I've been told. And it was built in a family garage. And Ben was on marijuana, and he liked his liquor. And he saved no one that day. And he should not be there. It's a lie to our lifeguards, because we have very good lifeguards. And they should not have to paddleboard out for him once a year. And it should not be a graveyard in Newport. We want a bird bath there, something fun for the kids, something good for everybody. And that's what the letter is about. And I haven't heard back from anyone. I think this is my fifth time here. I did get the spikes off of the head because it was killing seagulls. And thank God for Fox News, because the City Council would not take them off. And they could have been in jail for killing the seagulls, and they killed many. So I would like to hear back the date it is coming out. Thank you.
Like previous times, I believe the vast majority is incorrect, but you have a First Amendment right to say it. Next speaker, please. Okay. Ms. Harp, take us in a closed session, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council will adjourn to closed session to meet with the City Manager and Human Resources Director regarding labor negotiations with the Newport Beach Police Association, as well as the litigation matter titled State Farm General Insurance Company versus the City of Newport Beach, and two litigation matters titled Marshall Sync versus the City of Newport Beach. And that's all, as forth on the agenda, under Items 3A and B.
All right, we stand in recess until 4:30 PM for the regular meeting. Thank you.
All right. Welcome back to the January 9, 2024 City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right. Mr. Harp, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. There's no closed session report this evening.
All right. Tonight, we're going to have an invocation from Pastor Josh Cisco, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, Joe Stapleton.
Please come, Creator Spirit. Father, we gather here today to lift up our mayor, Will O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem, Joe Stapleton, and our council members. We are so grateful and thankful for their leadership, for their service, for their humility and their kindness as they serve the great city of Newport Beach. God, we pray that this would be the year of the Lord's favor. In all decisions, I pray that it would be just and right, but in a way that is wise. That though there is cleverness and there is things to be seen that look good, I pray that they would be looking to be clear and in unity. Lord, in an age of anxiety and fear, I pray that it does not turn into anger, but peace, faith, and power. Give our leaders, these men and women, strength, power, clarity. God, give them compassion. We thank you so much that they have put themselves in a place for criticism, but also I pray that they would be people that are formed by something stronger. We thank you. Provide them with unity. Provide them with collaboration. We thank you, and we bring this all under your name. We thank you. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, we thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
All right. Please join me as we salute the greatest symbol of freedom in the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right. City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Do we have any? We'll start with Councilmember Kleiman.
Just Happy New Year. No report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Blom?
None. Thank you.
Councilmember Avery?
I had a great holiday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagon?
No, I have none.
Councilmember Grant?
I have a few. I want to just recognize some of the wonderful activities and events that we had here in the city over the holiday season. We had a, starting with a wonderful Chamber of Commerce mayor's reception in December honoring our new mayor, Will O'Neill, and Mayor Pro Tem, Joe Stapleton. I also attended the Sunset Beach Sand Replenishment Groundbreaking, which is an important project for Newport Beach. It's going to move millions of cubic yards of sand from offshore down the coast to replenish our beaches. It's a really important project that commenced. I definitely want to thank the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter volunteers. We had a volunteer recognition event. These people work every day of the week throughout the year to help maintain our shelter, which is a city function, but these are volunteers that come into our city shelter and take care of our animals, and it's a really important recognition event, and I want to thank them all. I also want to thank the Newport Beach Commodores for their hard work on the 115th Annual Boat Parade. City staff for collecting gifts for Operation Christmas, a wonderful way to benefit our military families. And finally, I want to recognize Visit Newport Beach and their really dazzling Rose Parade Entry Jingle on the Waves, which won the coveted Extraordinary Award. Happy holidays.
Mayor Pro Tem Stapleton.
Yeah, I would just echo a lot of the things that Councilwoman Grant spoke of. Obviously, the sand replenishment project is critical, especially on the west side of Newport. If you have the opportunity to go out to the beach, the orange fencing is now down, so I went and ran out there this afternoon, and the beaches look really well taken care of, so that's good. And kudos to the Chamber of Commerce, Newport Beach and Company, and the Commerce Club for what I thought was one of the best boat parades we've had. So, great job.
Yep. And then I'll add on to that. We were able to attend the Patrick's Purpose Walk this year. Thank you very much to that organization for everything it does in our community. We have a finance committee meeting on Thursday of this week, and then to that sand replenishment, essentially, it wasn't quite a ribbon cutting because of sand, but we, I was able to join other mayors and state leaders and speak on the city's behalf. So, thank you. All right. We'll go now into matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. The only item is consider forming a City Council ad hoc committee comprised of three council members to be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the entire City Council to work with city staff and make a recommendation to the entire City Council regarding the selection, implementation, and integration of new technology to assist the city's public safety departments to protect the public and deliver effective and efficient services to the community. This is a non-discussion item. All in favor, please raise your hand.
That's seven zero.
Thank you very much. All right. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through 12. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members are received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion, unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
So if you're coming for consent calendar, that's, I'll get to you in just a second. If you're going to-
This is not public comment?
Not, it will be on consent.
Off on agenda.
I'll bring you up.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
I appreciate that.
No, I got you. All right. So we're going to start with the consent calendar and ask council members if they have any items to pull or announcements to make. Councilmember Kleiman?
None.
Councilmember Blom?
I have none.
Councilmember Avery? Councilmember Wagon?
Number six, please.
Pull number six?
Yes, please.
All right. Councilmember Grant? Mayor Pro Tem Stapleton?
None.
I have none. Mayor Pro Tem. Move the consent calendar except for item number six, which was pulled by Councilman Wagon in noting the amendment to item number one, the minutes. All right. Do we have a second? All right. Seconded by Councilmember Kleiman. Let's go ahead and go to public comment on the consent calendar. So, real quick, sorry. Some of you might have never attended a council meeting before, so let me just tell you just a couple things on how we'll handle this. We'll have public comments on the entire consent calendar right now. Most of you are probably here for the library lecture hall discussion, but if you're here for the consent calendar, now is the time to give public comments. After this, we will have the non-agenda, agenda, and non-agenda time to discuss. If you are here to talk on something especially, essentially, other than the consent calendar or the library lecture hall, and then we will get into the items on the lecture hall, and we'll have separate public comments on those. All right. So now we're on the consent calendar public comment. Mr. Mosher.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill, members of the City Council. My name is Jim Mosher. First of all, consent calendar item number one is the minutes from your December 12 meeting. And although there are some amendments proposed to those, they continue to say something that did not happen at that meeting, namely that you chose to hold your second meeting in November, on November 19. The item I want to speak about, though, is item number three, which is a proposed amendment to our municipal code having to do with the extent to which piers in our harbor can extend beyond something called the federal pierhead line. The two of you who were on the council back in 2018 may recall that the council tried to push back on the forever creep of piers, private piers, into the public water of our harbor. And they imposed on the city and the Harbor Commission a new policy which grandfathered in the piers that existed, but did not allow any new piers to extend beyond those federal lines. And I believe that is correctly what it said. This proposal is going back to a previous policy that the city had in which it drew its own lines, something we now know, according to the State Lands Commission, is actually prohibited by California government code. There is a right way to do this, namely to ask the Army Corps of Engineers, to get the Secretary of the Army to approve those new lines if those are the ones they want. This is not the correct way to do it. This is not the correct way to do it. If you are ignoring that advice, and even going with this, I would suggest you look at page 3-14. I should explain this not only as reverting to the previous thing where we drew our own lines, but it's actually giving the Harbor Commission, not only to allow new piers out to those lines, which your policy did not allow, it's allowing the Harbor Commission latitude to go even beyond those relaxed city lines. And to do that, they have to make some findings, which are on page 3-14 at the very least. I think you should amend that to require them to make all of those findings. It does not currently say they have to make all of those findings. And in addition, you may be curious, your current policy that the City Council wrote has some additional findings, which you will find on page 3-6. There are five of those. Only one of those has been incorporated into the new findings. And you may wonder why they are not. I certainly do. I don't think this is ready to be introduced. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, we'll come back up here. We have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Just do a hand vote?
Do a hand vote, but let me read the title for ordinance 2024-1, which is item three, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending section 17.35030, bayward location of piers and floats, and 17.35.60, Balboa Island non-commercial piers of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, and repealing City Council Policy H1. All in favor of the consent calendar, please raise your hand. That is seven zero.
Okay. All right, we're moving into item number six. Before we do so, do we have anyone who would like to declare a conflict?
I have a conflict on item six due to real property interest at 224 Marine.
Okay. Mr. Wagen, you pulled it. Would you like a staff presentation?
Just maybe a couple questions or just... There was a member of the public who had written about this, but it does say the apparent low bidder for the project, International Line Builder, submitted a bid approximately 37.8% below the engineer's estimate of 16.5 million. Is that typical for something like this? I mean, we're doing the project, not Edison, so is that, you know, the second bidder was pretty similar in cost, only by a couple thousand dollars. So do we think that it's legit and we're going to get the work completed? And any potential change orders or things that would make that go up?
Thank you, Councilman Dave Webb, your Public Works Director. Yeah, we feel confident. International Line Builder is a very good reputable company and are qualified to do the work. The bid came in surprisingly lower than we have seen, which is good news because we've seen a lot of escalation in bid prices. So having it lower was a good thing. I don't think it's out of the ordinary or anything to be concerned of at this time. I checked with Mike Senicori, our Assistant City Engineer, and he's been on top of this, and we feel real confident on this ward.
Gotcha. One of the comments from the public had asked, you know, how does this impact those who prepaid for the underground assessment?
So the way it works is, obviously, there's some prepayment, and there's a bonding element to it. And this is the second of three phases, if recall. We just did phase zero, and we have one more to go. Should the project get completed and there's leftover funds, and those funds are returned to the property owners, either if they prepaid or they bonded, any surplus will be returned to them on that. So we won't know until after this next phase of bid and construction.
So you could say, how many months would it be for, and how?
It's quite a ways off. I mean, we're talking years still.
Got it.
This is such a large project, this phase will take quite a long time. Remember that we'll have to do, we're putting the conduits in now for Edison. They'll come back later and pull all the conductors and connect everybody up. They'll take the poles out. And when this phase is done, we'll do the next phase. And then after that, there's actually some alley repaving. We'll have to come in because we're tearing up all the concrete aisles. We'll have to come in and repave that. So there's many years before we'll actually know the final cost in this.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion up here? All right, seeing none, we'll go to public comment. Public comment on item number six?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Lee Pearl, and I live on Balboa Island. I think my comments are going to be very brief. I promised Sue we would be out by five, so I think we're going to be able to do it. Without the city's program to do undergrounding and actually build the projects, I think there is probably five underground projects in Newport Beach that would have never happened. So I want to compliment the council on the foresight to take the construction portion away from Edison because I know this project would never have happened. It would have cost so much more. Edison adds, just to give you an example, there's a 40% administrative fee just right on the top of this. And although we pay staff administrative fees, it's not even close to what Edison is charging. And then with all the disruption at Edison, it never would have got designed and planned and built. So I want to compliment the council and also the city staff because it's very difficult to build on the island. And as you can see from the West End project that's finishing up, the transformers have been removed. The wires have been removed on the top part of the poles. And I went by today, and those people riding the ferry into Balboa Island, that pole is going to disappear for that photo op that everybody takes when they come to visit the island. So I just wanted to compliment the council and the staff, and we look forward to working for the next few years on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on item number six? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. We've got, let's see, Mr. Wagen, would you like to make a motion? To approve staff recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Sure. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Avery. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. There you go.
The motion carries six zero.
All right, made for, there you go. All right. We'll now move into the public comment on non-agenda items. Oh, and Sue, Sue, we got you out.
I told you, Noah, get permits on them animals before they board that wood ship in the harbor. Mayor Will O'Neil, huh? Can I have my photos on the screen? That'd be great. And I love you Newport Beach. Huntington Beach can... I need to say no more. Weapons. There might be a possibility of a theory that the weapons with the green cards and later dates coming up might meet the weapons issued to take out our own country, being our country's been sold out. Weapons exchange, AK-47 to the United States. What was the one that we had, M-16 over in Russia? Go ahead and go to the next. I mean, the weapons are changing so much. Then we have these evil things. Offshore oil. Man, you could store everything on that. And I know the one in Huntington Beach I could swim to, the closest one. So let's go to the next. We do not want to train our kids to kill other kids or adults. This is, I would, would you guys agree with me? This is wrong? Do not put a weapon in a kid's hands? Maybe a lead pencil, you know, the old school education? Okay, next. Trying to get some humor in this, and it's not very humorous. We got subdivisions. Orange County, I had Jenny give you all the locations in Orange County. There's many. I've added the weapons to the labs, you know. It's restricted area. Anything that says restricted area probably is not good. If we go to the next. Next. Tornado shelters Midwest, that'd be storage in case we get invaded because we've already been sold out. Go ahead and go to the next. Trains, that's mobile. They rotate, and they don't get off. So when it's time to park, who knows when they're going to get them? Next. Firing squad, children's. It would not be good. I would, I would think that that's what's coming in the evil mind. Go ahead. Eastern Division, same, train. Thank you. Next. Now we got nuclear false tool sheds on every oil platform. We will never see rain again. And you know all these cameras that are on our streetlights? Gas stations have like 10 of them right on the tanks to watch us blow up. I guarantee Vulcan Government has underground cities where they're going to select who gets to live and dies, and they watch this on cameras.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Any other speakers on non-agenda items?
Mayor O'Neil, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. Earlier this afternoon, I mentioned to you the importance of the public being able to trust their government. And just a couple of minutes ago, I mentioned that the minutes from your December 12th meeting record something that did not happen. At that meeting, you were given a choice between holding your second meeting in November, on November 19th, or November 26th. My memory and the video clearly shows that all seven of you voted for November 26th. Yet a resolution came out after the meeting that says you voted for November 19th. There is something clearly wrong and disconnected with that. So my suggestion is when you come to agenda item number 18, which is an agenda item, motion for reconsideration. But this is the only opportunity the public has to comment on that. When you get to that agenda item, I would suggest somebody reconsider that vote that you took last year if November 19th is truly the date that you want to meet on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other non-agenda items? All right, we'll move into current business. Item number 13, Lecture Hall Building. And the, let's see, so we've got... Councilmember Blom, would you like to start it off?
Not really, but I will. All right. Hello. Okay, we're back. Thought the last one was long. Okay. Couple of things about this MOU. It's been an evolving process. When Councilmember Kleiman and I sat down to negotiate it, I just want to say it was met with a wonderful group of people from the foundation that attacked it with nothing but great civility and professionalism. And so coming from two different sides of the aisle was kind of our choice on this to get the best deal for the city. That is why we sit up here. And they went for the best deal for the foundation, and we landed somewhere in between. So I'm going to have Yolanda go over the points of the MOU, and then we can bring it up here for a little more discussion, if you will.
Great. Yeah, we're, after Yolanda, we'll have the foundation have a, they have a presentation as well, I believe. All right. Yolanda?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public. My name is Yolanda Summerhill with the City Attorney's Office, and I'll be providing a brief overview of the major revisions to the MOU that you had before you this evening.
Will you have your move? It's not working for some reason.
Okay. So this first slide represents the total project cost, which has been updated to reflect that $23.5 million for the project, with each party allocated equally the shares for the project. As we heard from the foundation previously, they have $7.1 million on hand and then $4.6 million in fundraising efforts that will follow. In terms of the sequencing of that, you have here, if this MOU is approved this evening, the foundation would place $7.1 million in escrow virtually immediately thereafter. The city would then award the contract. The lecture hall would be built. And then the foundation would have that either two years and/or the time of the issuance of the certificate of occupancy to provide that delta, the remainder, which is about $4, $4.5 million. So the foundation was very confident that they were going to be able to raise that $4.6 million within the two years or upon issuance of the CFO. However, they were amenable to provide some additional safeguards just to ensure that the city obtained its, their commitment. So with that, they did agree to a suspension of their use of the facility until such time as the full amount is paid, as well as providing their endowment income to the city until their share of the final amount is paid. Another thing that we heard at the prior council meeting was that spending controls were important for this agreement. So with that, we have some revisions here, for instance, with respect to FFNE. That was fairly broadly defined previously. Whereas in this version that you have before you, it's limited to those FFNEs that are in the construction drawings. Additionally, with respect to change orders, it was fairly broad. It provided a meet and confer process as well as not specifying who would pay for any change orders. However, in this revision, it does require the requesting party to pay for any optional change order. And finally, with respect to future project enhancements, it authorized the foundation to request future project enhancements. However, in this version, it is only once their full commitment is paid for and at the foundation's expense that future project enhancements are authorized. Another major concession that the city obtained from the foundation was with respect to priority of use. Previously, it was governed by the Library Board of Trustees Policy 15, and essentially, the Library Board and the foundation regulated and controlled use of the facility. However, as you see in this version here this evening, the foundation does have a right of first use for 50 years, I'm sorry, excuse me, 50 days out of the year. And then thereafter, the city really manages the scheduling and the use of the facility. We did want to facilitate their fundraising efforts. Therefore, in addition to the original MOU naming opportunities and the Second Amendment naming opportunities, we did include an additional naming opportunity for individual auditorium seats. And then with respect to operational and maintenance costs, we did have some discussion that we heard at the study session. And as a group, there's a possibility of a per-ticket cost. As it is written in the MOU you have before you this evening is that it would provide a cost study, the city would prepare a cost study, and the user fees would be applied for each use broadly, and that would be applied to the foundation as well. A couple of just minor revisions that the foundation was amenable to was just an insertion in section 3.6, making clear that they would be subject to the special land use restrictions that are recorded on the property. And with respect to section 12.3, the naming opportunities for the auditorium and the audiovisual booth were inadvertently omitted. So in the final version, we want to make sure those are included. And that concludes my presentation. We're available for any questions. Thank you.
I had one. When we were, when we were looking at the language that said the requesting party of a change order would bear the cost of it, what happens if there is a item found underground that suddenly and dramatically increases the cost of the project? Who would be considered the requesting party for a change order due to unforeseen circumstances?
Actually, the way that, it wouldn't be requested part, we'd have to address the underground, whatever the conflict is, and that would add to the cost of the contingencies. And the way it's set up is that would be a common cost. It'd be at the, in the, of the project, that would include in the total cost that we split 50/50. That would be in the contingency amount, which again, we both share 50/50. Should, for instance, one of us decide we want to move the building five feet, which impacts utilities, then we would probably be on the hook for that or the party requesting.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Grant?
Can you remind me what the income stream on the endowment is annually?
About approximately $150,000. They can confirm that, but I-
Annually, okay.
Any other questions? All right. All right. Does the foundation have a presentation?
Mayor O'Neil, councilmembers, thank you very much for taking the time and for your consideration. I also wanna take a moment to thank Yolanda, Dave, the rest of the city staff for all the hard work they've done over the past few years, and more importantly, the past few weeks, as we've moved forward on the, the third MOU. And then also to recognize Noah and Lauren, we're calling you the formidable duo now as our, as our negotiating partners. And thank you for all of your time and consideration and working through this in a very civil, logical way that hopefully got us to a, to a much better place on, on everything. I'll keep this really short, mostly 'cause Yolanda took about half my presentation already. So first, first and foremost, for, for those that don't know, my name is Kevin Barlow. I'm the Chair of the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation. The Newport Beach Public Library Foundation mission state is, statement is up there, but I think it's important to note that we exist solely to support the library. And that's our, our main objective is, is supporting the library as it comes to this, this conversation. Real quick history, we're established in 1989 and raised 2.2 million, so about 33% of the total cost and private funds for the construction of the central library, which completed in 1994. Over the past 10 years, we've granted $2 million in capital improvements for advanced technology and as well as $5 million in programming for the community. Real quickly on, on what we are and what we aren't, and I think there was some confusion on this, so I do wanna make sure this is clear to, to members of city council, is that we are an institutionally related operating foundation that raises funds from the community to support the library and programs. And what we are not is a private foundation with its own financial resources. So we don't write checks, we don't choose who the checks go to. All of the money in our funds come from our donors, who are primarily your constituents, to support the library on top of the generous budget given by the city. So just, just for a quick recap, and I won't hit on all the points that Yolanda hit on as well. Prior to the November 14th meeting, the foundation had met and exceeded all of its fundraising requirements by over 15% from the original MOU and the First and Second Amendments. At the November 14th meeting, we were happy to announce that we've increased our fundraising efforts from 6.5 million to 11.7 million. We've since codified that into the MOU. Addition, we have agreed to deposit $7.1 million into the escrow account within 10 days of the construction signing, and moved up the timeframe from, in our belief, five years to, to the opening of the hall in two years for the remaining $4.6 million. I think importantly, as Yolanda mentioned as well, we did provide recourse that if we are unable to raise the funds, we will lose any privileges associated with the Library Foundation MOU, as well as we will have to provide the money from our endowment. And Councilmember Grant, to give you the, the full answer to your question, it is 5% of the trailing 12-month balance, which works out right now to just over $150,000. And then, as Yolanda mentioned as well, the foundation's agreed to prior use of the hall, which is less than 15% of the available usage days. The city will manage the other 85%. So we're hopeful the city can generate quite a revenue stream from the other 85% of the days that they're managing. And although we are raising 50% of the cost of the building, we've agreed to pay an event usage fee of up to $700 per use, and it provided the language to that, to Yolanda, prior to the meeting, so hopefully she's provided that to you as well. And just as a reminder, go back to the big picture here, do the generous support of private donors, the hard work of the fundraising team, and the, the city of Newport Beach and its residents will be the sole owners of a world-class facility that they manage at a steeply discounted cost of 50% of the expected project costs. And this will be accretive to the city's balance sheet by owning the building on their, on their balance sheet. So we're, so we're missing the, the final slide there, but I guess the main point is we urge the city council to support the 10-year-long journey we've had to build the lecture hall and the civic auditorium that will be the cultural, educational, informational heart of Newport Beach. And I'm happy to announce that our board meeting yesterday, we approved the third version of the MOU contingent on the changes that Yolanda mentioned and changes in section 3.6 that we passed along to Yolanda, and hopefully she's passed along to you, and I'm sure you'll have plenty to discuss about that. So thank you very much for the time. Oh, and I wanna bring up Larry Tucker as well. I think you all, you all know Larry, he doesn't need an introduction.
Folks, hang on, hang on. So I, I recognize a lot of you. You've been here before, so you know clapping, cheering, et cetera. Please don't. And we're gonna have a lot of public comment tonight, so again, please don't. So, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Larry Tucker, and I'm gonna do what applicants do when they have somebody on the dais that might not be favorably inclined to their project, is, is that I'm gonna go ahead and more or less rebut what I expect will be said up there, because once I sit down, I probably won't be invited back up again. So this is, you know, a little different than your, your typical testimony. So in my testimony at the study session, I focused on the city's financial wherewithal to pay for half the cost of the lecture hall. And I've done that again in a response to Mr. McCaffrey's email to you. And that's in a fair amount of detail. My November 14 testimony also covered a typical want versus need analysis and concluded that, that analysis does not apply if your resources allow you to comfortably pay for both wants and needs, which is true for the city. No facts have changed from the study session, so we ask that the council majority provide the same favorable vote, notwithstanding Mr. McCaffrey's late effort to drum up opposition. Of course, we would happily welcome prior council dissenters to our, to the majority, so they too can tell their children and grandchildren that they had the foresight to vote for the Woody Hall at a bargain price. Today, I would like to address the argument that the city should turn down nearly $12 million of private money because its share of the project cost will be depleted for the moment. For its share of the project cost will deplete for the moment its capital reserves. As I learned in college accounting and during my time as a CPA at Pricewaterhouse, a reserve is an accounting concept, not a financing concept. That means it reflects something that has already happened, which in turn means it is backward-looking. Accounting statements do not look forward, they only reflect the past. But when businesses are deciding if they can afford to buy a capital asset, they of course look at reserves they hold, but they also look at the future revenues that they know they will receive or rationally expect. So if an entity is considering buying something that costs $100, but it only has 50 on hand, then it wouldn't buy the item if that were the end of the story. But if the entity expects to have 250 coming in from a dependable source in the foreseeable future, then it could comfortably proceed. As I previously testified and corresponded, and as Keith Curry has noted to you as well, the city comfortably has the wherewithal to pay its share of the lecture hall cost. It has enormous revenues coming in, they're expected to even increase more, and it, it has $381 million of cash reserves. It's rather staggering, cash and securities, I should say, liquid reserves. Even though the cost of the lecture hall has increased from the original MOU, that is not a relevant fact in deciding whether or not to proceed. The real question is, is a world-class facility a worthwhile investment for the city to make at a price of $11.7 million? What is not relevant is whether the city will be getting as good of a deal as it once thought it would get. The council majority decided on November 14 that the lecture hall at a price of $11.7 million is a good deal for the city. Just as a reminder, without the foundation, there would be little programming at the library, as is typical in other cities in Orange County, that are not lucky enough to have a library foundation willing to raise and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars a year for programming. Part of the presentation, may-
The presentation was to the MOU, Larry. That's not part of the presentat, that, that's not MOU-related, is it?
Well, I indicated that why, you know, I was gonna go ahead and discuss that, I mean, I was-
Sorry, I misunderstood then, because it's my understanding when we were, when we were discussing the foundation's presentation-
I, I should have about a minute more, it's not, it's not gonna go on very long.
All right.
So even though the cost of the lecture hall has increased from the original MOU, that is not a relevant fact in deciding. The question is, you know, is it a worthwhile investment for the city to make? And the council majority made that decision on November 14th at a price of $11.7 million is a good deal for the city. So, you know, as I, I mentioned the reminder that there's little programming but for the foundation, and as a further reminder of the generosity of the foundation, the foundation proposes to pay 50% of the cost of the lecture hall while having the right to use the lecture hall only 50 days a year, which is less than 14% of the days in a year. The use during the remaining days each year would be solely up to the city to decide. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I had a couple of, we'll have time for public comment. I had a couple of follow-up questions. So the requesting party language, who would decide who is the requesting party if there were a dispute, number one? And number two, what is the, what is the mechanism for the city to decide whether they're going to request a change order? Hopefully, the answer is it would come to council.
So there are two different change orders. One is necessary change orders, change orders that would be required in order the project to continue to move forward, and that's within the city's sole discretion. With respect to optional change orders, that, I don't know that the parties contemplated it coming to the council, I think that that might interfere with the flow of construction. I can defer to Dave on that and see if he has some additional thoughts, but I would think that that would, we could modify the language accordingly.
Well, I guess the, okay, so this might be, this might be a city manager question. So in this case, there's the difference between the necessary change orders, which it sounds like would be necess, obviously necessary, and that's already covered in this, but if there was an optional change order where someone was requesting it, wouldn't that request need to come from the council as opposed to staff? I mean, wouldn't that need, that, that seems kind of an important issue for, for, an increase in cost on a project due to an optional change order seems to be a council decision as opposed to a staff decision. So that's why I'm asking about this.
Yes, maybe I could, I could take that. During the construction, the plans are pretty specific, so let's just take an option, let's say the entryway marble tiles or something, and we wanna change that, or there's a request for that. If it's outside the scope of the plans, I think it's surely something my staff would route up either through Grace to the council or, or at least some process. We don't anticipate that, we plan on building this around the plans. Things do come up, let's say something is not available, some type of glass or something we need to do. I think depending on the discretionary, if it's way outside or at significant cost or changes the function of the project, we should probably vet that. But if it's just a substitute of a, a different manufacturer's roughly equivalent, then that would lie within the administrative authority of the project. And as long as it's within the contingency change order amount, then it really would probably stay in that level, I would think. Unless the council so chooses they wanna have an oversight or something, watching every change order, we could surely check in or, or run those through.
Well, what would be, what would be the amount of a change order that would make you think, wow, I should probably go to council to make this decision?
I'd hesitate to put a cost in, 'cause it can get really expensive on a beam or something. I, I would be comfortable in truly having this report back on any type of change, if there's anything over a significant amount, let's just say 50,000, it could be 20. The changers are big in the electrical or the underground or something like that. I think knowing my staff and myself, we'd let you give a heads up. If we hit something underground like a tank or something, we're gonna let you know, and probably give you a direction on how we think we should approach it, and then you could bring it back if you like, or-
And I would just add one final piece to that. It requires the requesting party to provide the funds to the city within seven days, so-
Unless it's the city, though.
Unless it's the city.
Right, that's kinda my point, is, on, it, this is an our side question. So in, in our side question, you know, I'm trying to make sure that this costs, the, any, you know, change orders on the back end of this do not rise quickly.
We, we could certainly incorporate that language that is clear-
I'm not sure we need to incorporate the language. I'm asking more along the lines of, you know, how, how is staff going to handle this? And so this would probably be a question that would eventually come to you, Grace, so how, how are you, how would you handle that one?
Right, you know, I think typically, if it's something that's actually gonna change, like capacity, like say, you know, when we're thinking, oh gee, we can, we can add another row of seats or some, you know, that I think needs to come to council. And I think typically with larger projects, we have a percentage threshold, I'm trying to remember what it is, that if it's within that, it stays with us, but if it's over...
There are, there are 125,000, 125% for the city manager to sign off, but typically, you approve it of contingency, in this case, it's about $1.9 million, so we'd be already approved in that manner. I, I think the comfort level is, we just have to be keenly aware that if anything is out of the ordinary, outside the plans, we should really vet it up through Grace, and we'll probably put you on an email change. Any concerns with this item? Let's say we, we have to change the carpet for some reason, we can't get the spec carpet, but there's some other type that looks well, but it's 20% more. I think we'd run that up and say, this would be within the project, I don't think it's we're requesting it, we'd just, for the sake of an FYI, make sure everybody is aware of those things.
Okay. And then, foundation rep, I wanted to ask you about the, the very last thing you said about the approval of the MOU, but it was contingent on something. Would you mind coming back up for just a second? So I'm not sure I've seen the language that you referenced about modified language, did that go to the council? Is it, is it possible to find it and put it up on the screen at some point? But I guess the question for you is, so you, the, the, this MOU that is in front of us was not actually approved by, last night, it was, it was a modified version of what's in our staff report, according to the language. So if we were to approve this MOU as written without that, you don't have approval, you don't have authority to, to sign the document tonight?
No, we do not. It was approved contingent on the changes. The MOU that was sent to the city council was still during the negotiating period. Our team has gone back and forth with Yolanda, who has, I know surfaced the issues to the negotiating committee and into the council, but for approval, we do have some room for negotiation, but it's all in section 3.6, so we're, we're happy to speak about that if necessary, but as is, it was not voted for approval.
We might need to talk about it, 'cause if, if for some reason there wasn't a majority up here to cap the cost without doing a cost study first, it sounds like we wouldn't have a meeting of the minds tonight, which would be a problem for the next item, item number 14, 'cause I'm not, I, it's a, so this is it. So if we had, if we approved this before we did a cost study on what we would nor, so, for folks who haven't done, gone through this before, we, we have, for any use, the way we charge use fees is we actually have a cost study provided to the city council, and then we approve, approve them. But there's been no cost study done on this, which is, I guess, the point. So you're, you're trying to, you, what you're trying to do here is, if it's less than 700, if the cost study says it's gonna be less than $700 to rent, then you would get the lesser, but if it's more, or substantially more, you would cap it at $700.
That's correct, that's, that's the-
Okay. Okay, good to know. All right. Any other questions or, all right, any discussion before we go out to, to public comment? Mr. Wagon?
What, what is the usual cost that we charge for, you know, I know it's not comparable, because this is a different location, but, you know, for the room across the way, for Oasis, for Marina Park, you know, what, what's that dollar amount? Is it close to this, you know?
I'm having our director, Sean Levin, come up.
Sorry, Sean.
And we have different rates, too, depending on the type of group as well, but he can speak to us.
Correct. Good evening, Mayor O'Neil, county city council. So I thought this might come up, I just pulled up Marina Park's fees as a, as a sort of a comparable item. So resident, resident rate is 4.21 an hour, and then for non-resident, 7.73 an hour. And for a commercial rate, 'cause that's a, they jump up significantly, get it here for you, it's gonna go up to about $1,200 an hour for a commercial rate. It's a point, it's a point of reference.
And that includes like staff, or is that just cleaning? Is that- And that includes like staff, or is that just cleaning? Is that, what?
There's an additional hundred and fifty dollar cleaning fee that goes on to that, but that include, that's an all-inclusive fee.
Right. And then maybe the library would know this question, but how long would a typical, how many hours would we be using?
Uh, it depends on rental. Typical rentals are anywhere from four to six hours.
And is that probably less for a library? I'd ask the foundation, maybe, or somebody that might know the answer to what the typical series would be? Sorry, what was that?
He said it was like three hours.
Three hours, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Sean.
Mr. Avery?
Thank you. Mr. Webb, are you, we reasonably confident that the, the work we'll do for foundation and the rest of the work on the library and reconfiguring the parking lot? Are there items that we think may be underground that might be a problem? Things we don't know? Things we're concerned about?
I would, given the age of the central library, that's in a really old building, and that we constructed that building, and we probably had pretty good ass builds at the time, because the architect and the engineers took the information off our records we have on hand, I would expect that we wouldn't, I don't know of a known gas station or something was on the site. If you recall, when we built this facility, this was all virgin land here that was basically hollowed out. And the library, if I remember, was about the same. So there hasn't, wasn't a prior use that might lead us to that. But there's always something, something doesn't go into a plan or doesn't get recorded. You could have electrical line or communication line or something.
Thank you.
Mr. Stapleton?
Maybe the library director can help me. I'm curious, in the given Friends Room capacity right now, the lecture series may be forty-four days a year, how many other programs are happening in the Friends Room as we see it in a given month or calendar year, like twenty twenty-three?
For the library, outside of foundation programming, the library typically holds up to a couple dozen programs in the Friends Meeting Room per year. With the library lecture hall, we would look for expanded opportunity for, for additional programming.
But for last year, maybe two a month, outside of the foundation?
Uh, yes, approximately.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Cool. And then, there were, so if I'm understanding the numbers right, if we were looking at a, sorry, Sean, what was the resident rate? Or Sean, go. What was the resident rate if, if it were Marina Park?
So at Marina Park, the, for, for the commercial or non-commercial?
So what would the, what would the witty lecture series be considered?
Uh, the witty lecture series would be considered a nonprofit, I believe. I believe they're a nonprofit.
I believe so, too. So is that a?
That rate would be a hundred and fifty-two dollars per hour.
Hour. Got it. Okay. Yeah, that would be Marina Park. We haven't done the cost study. Anyway, all right. So let's see. So, Mr. Harp, did you have anything else before we went out to public comment?
I don't think so. There's only just two other potential changes that were referenced in the presentation, and one was compliance with the slurs, and then I believe the foundation wanted additional naming rights. So, those would be, I think, the three changes that are at issue.
Got it. So that people don't think we're, I know we use a lot of acronyms, slur means.
It's a basically Irvine requirement, Irvine Company requirement that regulates how the property is used, because this used to all be Irvine Company property.
Got it. Special land use restriction. Okay. So, anything else before we go out to public comment? All right. We got to public comment.
Thank you. My name is Bob McCaffrey. I live here in Newport Beach on Balboa Island. I think the city has three main responsibilities. Number one is to run the city as efficiently as possible. Number two, keep the city in good shape. And number three, keep it safe for the taxpaying citizens in Newport Beach. I do not think we, the city is in the business of making lecture halls. First of all, we have several places that could already be used. It could be the Lidl Theater, the Theater in Quatero Almar, or the one in Fashion Island. If you go through with this, my main concern, one of my main concerns is that they don't come up with the money. I don't think the city should spend one cent until the foundation has come up with one hundred percent of their money. Because if they don't, it's going to get stuck to the taxpayers of Newport Beach, and that's not fair. And I have a better idea. Have the foundation raise all the money. If they do, I'll chip in three million bucks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. I suspect some of you would like to speak. If you would, just line up in the center aisle. That would be efficient. Thank you.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, following on your comment, I think the public may be confused about exactly what it is you're deliberating. There is a staff report which has a version of an MOU that's dated January second. One would probably not know it. There's a couple of agenda packet additions in the lobby, one of them at the end of them, has an email from Ms. Summerhill dated yesterday at eight AM, and it shows a red line of something that's different than the one that's in the agenda packet. And apparently, there have been changes made since then, so I'm not quite sure what you have before you and are deliberating. The comment I wanted to make is that the MOU is with the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation, and I am a great supporter of public libraries. I can't speak to how it works in the rest of the world, but in America, public libraries are the great social equalizer. They are a place where all people, regardless of their station in life, their wealth or poverty, are all equally welcome, are supposed to be. And to them, the services provided by the library, which are understood to be free, are supposed to be equally accessible to all. So I commend this foundation for raising money in support of our public library. I think that's very commendable. I commend them also for wanting to increase the facilities that the library has. I think that is very commendable. I am concerned about a couple of things. Number one, in these latest negotiations, it looks like the word "library" is being removed from library lecture hall. So this will not be a library facility under the control of the Board of Library Trustees, but apparently will be a civic building, perhaps controlled by the Recreation Department. I'm not sure what your thinking is about that. That is one concern, and I noticed in one of the letters, even one of the Library Foundation members wondered if it is not a library building, can the foundation even contribute towards it? And second, even in the foundation's use, it seems to be for ticketed events, and they're suggesting the city will use it as a for-profit thing. So my comment is, in the spirit of what public libraries are supposed to be, I do hope that you will go forward with this. I do hope that it will be a library facility, and I do hope that a significant amount of the time will be used for free public events, which is what public libraries are supposed to offer to all citizens, not just some. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lizanne Witty, and a Library Foundation volunteer since nineteen ninety-four. So I've seen it all. And not since the main library opened its doors thirty years ago has a cultural facility been built in Newport Beach despite the growing wealth and population over three decades. Recognizing an obvious need and receiving encouragement from our audiences and civic leaders, the Library Foundation Board envisioned an addition to the Civic Center campus that reflected the ambitions and the future of the city. A plan evolved over the years to build this lecture hall, and you all know why. The foundation now produces over fifty programs a year, making do in a room, not a theater or auditorium. And these programs are successful in spite of the many limitations the Friend Room, the Friends Room presents. When the lecture hall went beyond an idea to a designed building, there was enthusiasm from other cultural organizations and members of the business community that need event space, too. It's a win-win for everyone. Will there ever be a new cultural building in Newport Beach? This is your chance to finally make it happen by supporting the construction of a landmark building and cultural destination that will serve the future, the public far into the future. And you can be proud and join the celebration when this lecture hall opens its doors. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Alan Cashin, and I'm a sixty-year resident of Newport Beach. And in my citizenry here, I have done a lot of things. I look around the room, and I see mentors of mine in civic duty. I currently serve on the Finance Committee, so I look at the project through the eyes of the mission that we have, which is to provide fiscal governance and review and monitor events that affect the financial status of our city. At the same time, my wife and I and my family have donated and supported the library over the years, including a year-end gift to help with this shortfall. I love the library. I use it all the time. So I have the sense that I'm looking at this from many different angles. I have the experience, but as my role as a Finance Committee member, which this has not come before us, at least as far during my time, an obligation. And several of the council people brought up some really good questions, which caused concern for me. And that's essentially a, a uncapped obligation. And I don't think there's any ill will, any mean spirit, anything to do with anything other than to do what is right. But the scope changes, the unexpected costs for operations, the unknown change orders, the existing conditions, all that stuff causes me concern, and I would like to see a better way to cap that or minimize that to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Max Sukarpina, Newport Beach native. July nineteen ninety-four was the opening of the Central Library, and that was a wonderful day for six-year-old me. One, Ruby's Diner was giving away free hamburgers, fries, and milkshakes. But my parents dropped me off, and I stayed there the whole day, and it was a long thirty-year, thirty-year-long love affair of spending time at the Central Library from elementary school, middle school, high school, and CDM, where I got to check out books, research, study, meet with groups. It's a wonderful institution. What worries me about this lecture hall is that it's a eighty thousand dollar per seat building for one single use. And I think as we look into the city on what we can best use our resources for, we should make sure we are not duplicating resources that we already have within the city, whether they be private or publicly owned by the city. So, you know, as this last speaker said, we need to make sure that we don't have any uncapped responsibility if cost overruns do happen, which in this city, they continue to happen. And we have to look at our fiscal needs, especially if we're withdrawing all of our coffers. So please look at this correctly, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Teddy Ray, and I'm Chair of the Board of Crystal Cove Conservancy. And this is a great segue for me to come up, because I'm really surprised that more people haven't, other organizations haven't come up tonight to lend their support for this. We also have a speaker series at Crystal Cove. We've, I think our last one, we had an author come in on animal conservation, and it sold out in probably five days. So we fully intend to use the lecture hall for our larger events, and I hope you'll support it, too.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Erin Kingsley. Want to thank all of you for your time and commitment and contributions to our city. I have grown up in the city of Newport Beach and moved back here from San Francisco when my first child was born. We now have three. Their ages are four, three, and one. We had a very big weekend last weekend. My two older children got their first library cards. And it was just about as magical as I remember it when I was a kid as well. As an active member of the young family community here in Newport Beach, I speak for many families in articulating how excited we are at the opportunity to have access to such a space. One of the things that we lost during COVID was the ability to come together and to gather a diverse group of backgrounds, opinions, and overall points of view. A center like this, as we heard from Teddy, allows many different types of organizations to come to our community and to allow not just our generation, but future generations to profit. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Bruce Clark. I've lived in Newport Beach for forty-seven years. I'm not a native, but I feel like I'm getting closer and closer. I'm also one of the founders of the new free program that the foundation's putting on, Spotlight and Science, which has just started this year. I have to tell you that one of the most interesting things about it was each time we've announced a new speaker, it's been fully subscribed within two or three days. So we're way behind where we need to be in order for this brand-new program to be as popular as we know it's going to be able to be. I have, I have three items to mention to you quickly. For either one, I'm tired of having our neighboring cities like Costa Mesa with the Seegerstrom Theaters, Laguna Beach with the Art Museum and the Laguna Playhouse, the city of Irvine with the UCI, and city combination for the Barclay Theater, and a few facilities on the UCI campus, which is very difficult for most of us to have access to. I'm tired of spending my energy and emotion and money in these surrounding cities, which are much less wealthy than we are, because we don't have the facilities here in our city to, to cover the kinds of cultural things that I believe that we really need. The White, the Witty Hall would fill a huge gap in the city's limited list of venues for us to gather and to grow. And frankly, all of Southern California is well aware that the city of Newport Beach is way behind all of our neighboring cities and the facilities and capabilities for offering these cultural features. The second point I'd like to say is that you have a unique opportunity by making the right decision tonight for our city. In the process, you would be creating a legacy for this generation of the city council. There will be nothing else coming before the city council the rest of this decade that is similar in scale and importance to the city than what you're going to be voting on tonight. A new fire station or a corner park are terrific additions to the city, but they don't compare to the kind of legacy that a first-class building like this, that's going to be used very heavily by everybody within the city, can bring to, not just to the, to the people of the city, but to you as a city council. People won't, won't remember that you saved a few million dollars of the city's four hundred and forty million dollar budget, because you decided it was too expensive to spend that, a one-time expenditure for a building that's going to last for decades and decades and be an important part of the city's future. I think true, true leadership is identified and valued by your constituents when you make the wise use of our tax money to help build the city's capability to grow and to improve. The last comment I would make is that there's no reason that Witty Hall can't also be a moneymaker for the city if managed properly. The Library Foundation's programs will occupy the hall for fifty days, plus or minus, probably twenty to twenty-five percent of the building's use. And the most potential users are fully capable of paying for the cost for keeping the building going. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My time's up.
Just resetting. Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. My name's Dorothy Larson. I'm not sure I even need to speak after the eloquent people that we've heard that are so well-spoken, but I did want to make at least one comment. I was talking to, actually, one of the, the chairman of the Board of the Chamber recently, and he made a comment that I had not heard previously. And it really kind of goes to this cost per seat question, which is kind of a hilarious apples and oranges kind of comparison. We're building a fabulous lecture hall, civic auditorium, on land that is currently not buildable. Land in Newport Beach is essentially priceless. So whatever part of the cost of the entire project goes to that infrastructure is not, in my mind, part of the cost of a per-seat building. So I just wanted to make that point. And also, this city is such a fabulous place to live. And also, this city is such a fabulous place to live and work and recreate and to think and discuss and have wonderful Pulitzer Prize-winning authors come and create dialogue and just amazing programs. We have managed to build some really awesome recreational facilities, and I do not recall ever hearing about the costs are uncapped, there might be change orders, there's, you know, all, these issues are true with any project. And I think that it's time for an important cultural one to stand up to the value and the quality of our recreational ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jennifer Van Berg, and I wanted to make just a few comments as well. You know, we're just so excited about this project, and you probably can see that. And, you know, but how can you not be excited? What a unique opportunity, right now, to build this building, a state-of-the-art lecture hall, a building that will enrich the lives of our communities, providing content that appeals to every segment of our population. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And it's going to be around, it's going to be here, it's going to be servicing our community long after we're gone. So this is our opportunity. That's what we mean by a legacy opportunity. And I think, you know, public-private partnerships, when did those come about? Do you love them? I love them. And I love them because people can put their money where their mouth is. They can support projects by helping to finance them. How great is that? And, you know, these partnerships, I think, are also important because when it really kind of demonstrates, when you say they've raised $7 million so far, that kind of demonstrates a community's priorities to me. That should make your job easier. Okay, I know your job's not easy, but it should make it easier. That tells you that you've got a community that's already raised seven and is going to raise up to almost 12 to get this built. That tells me that this community wants this. So I just really encourage you right now to vote for this. I mean, multi-generational is one of my favorite kind of terms. You know, for me and my peers, our kids are just getting married, having babies, starting families, hopefully, if we're lucky, in Newport Beach. And this is what they want. They want to interact with their neighbors. They want access to cultural and educational programming. They're our future. Let's do this for them. So just asking you to vote to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Janet Hadley. I've long been involved with the foundation, about 25 years at least. I'm currently the chairperson of the Whitty Lecture Series, and I am very proud of the speakers that we are able to bring to our city. They are nationally recognized, usually internationally recognized as well. Thank you for all the people that have spoken before me. The important things about the foundation and the potential for this hall have already been identified. I would like to just talk about one thing, and that's accessibility. Not only do we have these lectures accessible to our community, I would like to make sure that what we offer to our community is accessible to all of our citizens. Last year, we hosted Dr. Arthur Kaplan, who is the founder of Medical Ethics, and he was a polio victim as a child. I was quite uncomfortable, yet proud of Dr. Kaplan for maintaining his dignity when his wheelchair could not be lifted up onto the stage. We provide the best staging we can for everybody. We couldn't have a ramp long enough, et cetera, and he very graciously ascended the stairs to get up there and do his presentation. His presentation was so important that many, many people told me afterwards that they wish he would come and speak every year. We provide access to extraordinary, extraordinary speakers. The other thing about accessibility is that in our new lecture hall, people who cannot hear well, people who cannot see well, and people who do not have the mobility that many of us are privileged to have, would have access to be able to see and hear and appreciate everything that our lecturers have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Forty years ago, 1983, I said yes to being a trustee on our library board. Within about a year, we decided we needed a new library. I remember being told, don't know, this is a recreational city only. If you want a library, go to Huntington Beach, go to UC Irvine. Well, we proceeded to make a library, and indeed, in 1994, we were successful. Unfortunately, we were limited to the, the space at the time by the environmental movement that told us, no, there wasn't room for a larger lecture hall. So we, we were limited to what is the Friends Hall, which is now, as everybody, I won't repeat what everyone else has said. It's, it's, we need something much better. The foundation has proven that Newport Beach is much more than a recreational city. We need, we, we need discussion, we need books, we need the things that a lecture hall will bring for all of us. So I want you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, bring it back up here. Would anyone like to speak? Councilmember Blum?
I know you've all been excited about this moment. I just want to say a couple of things. One, I've never been to a lecture series, and it's not really my thing. But I really like building infrastructure projects. It's actually kind of everything I think government's supposed to do. And that doesn't mean they're for me, just means they're for the community they represent as a whole. And lots, lots of times, not even the people that voted for me. But I don't think that's the point of being up here. I think it's to try to represent everybody, whether we have varying opinions or not. I also think a lot about this when we build things. If I was sitting up here when we were trying to build this city hall, I would have thought twice about the way in which we were funding it and financing it. I don't like the debt service associated with it, but I think that the building of this building has done amazing things for this city. I look at what's become of Lido House Hotel, Lido Marina Village, Cannery District, and I think it would have been impossible without this piece here. And so a lot of times, we don't look at just the direct effect, but the indirect effect that these things do as well. And growth spurns growth, and I truly believe that within this city. I think that this is our civic center, and turning it into a cultural piece is very important for me in Newport, whether I ever attend a lecture series or not. I am thankful with the way that we are going about this. And I know a lot of ideas been thrown around with this idea of depleting our surplus. Well, I have had the opportunity to also sit on the Finance Committee my entire time here, and luckily, we have a surplus every single time. And that's because we keep making money in this city. And we keep making money not because we're charging more taxes. We don't. We actually just take what we're given. We don't have extra sales tax here. Our TOT is passed on for the use of this city, and our property tax is the portion that we receive. It really keeps growing because the desire to live here keeps growing. And a lot of times, I look at what our job is up here as to be stewards of spending the money, not hoarding the money. I don't like deficit spending. I am in the business world, but I believe if there is extra money, then you have to put it back into the business. This is the business of what we do. And I believe that in all things. I believe that we should constantly be putting money into our people. We should constantly be trying to get the best in the world, and we should constantly be reinvesting in pieces of this city, whether they're for us or not, because we can't possibly have, be under the opinion that everything we like is what everything in this city should be. And so I'm supportive of this because of those reasons. I wouldn't be sitting here supporting it if we were taking out a bond measure or debt servicing this project. I am happy we're able to do things like buy a new building where we will eventually put our police headquarters. And I'm sure we'll all be up here debating that enormous cost at one point, too. And I want to keep doing other projects throughout this city that I'm sure we'll have this same argument up here in the future about how expensive those things will be, because we all need up here. And I just want to thank everyone for what a great process this was. And I really want to say it again. I love the negotiation process. I think sometimes when we both walk away scratching our heads and not getting what we want, that means we did a good job. And I think that's where we ended up on this MOU. And so I am very thankful for how we got through it. I'm very thankful for my colleague always bringing me back to another side of the table. And in the end, I think we got the best possible deal we could on behalf of the people of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kleiman?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I, for one, am shocked that Councilmember Blum has never been to a lecture series. I do want to start by thanking Assistant City Attorney Yolanda Summerhill for all of the heavy lifting on this agreement. And I want to mention, obviously, I was put on this ad hoc committee, I believe, to help negotiate the greatest protections and guarantees that we could for the city in considering this project. In the draft, the final draft that's included in the council packet, I believe we accomplished that as best we could, given the narrow time constraint and, of course, the unrealistic expectation that the Library Foundation could produce an additional $4 million between the date of the study session and approaching bid acceptance deadline. So most of the history on this project predates my time on council, but I did get a chance to witness firsthand the passion and emotional attachment for this project of those involved since its inception. I certainly have respect and appreciate the tremendous effort and dedication. I do believe that the foundation will continue to use their best efforts to attempt to fundraise to meet their remaining 50% commitment, to the extent possible with looming economic and other uncertainties. I do also support more opportunities for culture, education, and the arts in the city. And I'm supportive of making the type of long-term investments that have the potential to reimagine and re-energize an area. In this case, however, I cannot justify $16 million or even $11.5 million for a building that, while beautiful, will have such a limited use and reach. I know we've heard from a few additional groups today, and there may be a dozen or two additional uses. But we do also have an unknown annual price tag attached to this. So the Library Foundation anticipates using the hall about 50 years a day at most. And despite what we did here tonight, I have concerns and don't expect that the city will be able to find private or community uses that would substantiate the existence of a building designed only for lectures the other 315 days a year. And therefore, we would be left without the ability to recoup or offset the cost to program staff and maintain the lecture hall. The city is home to many theaters, including the newly restored Lido Theater, CDM, Sage Hill, and Harbor Day Schools. All here in Newport have auditoriums that can be utilized for lectures with seating for 300, 400, and 500, respectively. Interestingly, I learned that Sage has a black box, which is a flexible space with incredible acoustics that can be easily converted between a theater and a lecture hall to accommodate a multitude of uses, unlike this project as proposed. I simply don't believe that moving forward under the current scenario would be responsible stewardship of our taxpayer dollars. We've heard from a lot of residents, and I mean a lot, over the last week or so, and it seems that a majority would agree. I have to say, I really enjoyed hearing and learning what residents would prefer that we spend these funds on. Thematically, not surprisingly, public safety, infrastructure, and addressing homelessness. I share and represent these priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery?
I'm an optimist when it comes to these kinds of things because I've built a number of projects in this town when I was working for Orange Coast College, four buildings. And every time, they were a challenge. And every time, five years later, look back and go, gosh, we're glad we did it then. And so I think when an opportunity presents itself like this opportunity, considering the gifts from residents who really want this to happen and the Library Foundation that's worked so diligently on this, it's a, it's a real gift, as far as I'm concerned. And it is a legacy project. And I don't mean that in an ego sort of way. I mean that in a way that it will take people into other worlds, into other ideas for, for decades. It'll bring people together. I've attended a few lecture hall speaking events, and they were excellent, and they were moving. And I, this town is full of people who are, who have a lot of different interests, a lot of successful people. And as long as the programming is good, people are going to show up, and they're going to fill, and those programs will fill. And they have been doing that in the old, like, in the old library community room. So I also think this lecture hall is ahead of its time in the sense that this area that we're sitting in now, Newport Center, is going to go, undergo a transformation that's incredible in the next 20 to 25 years. And that's all I'm going to say. And this library is going to be a part of that. I mean, this lecture hall is going to be a part of it. And it's all happening, this town has been, never in the history, so many building permits out right now for businesses, for residents. And it reflects the optimism and the people coming to this town, that not only bringing their money, but they're bringing their ideas and their passions. And so I just think the town is, in my experience, just kind of, I just feeling it around town, it's just going to another level because of all the ideas and the people contributing. It's not the council that is responsible for the, for the bounty of Newport Beach. It's the residents and the businesses that make it happen. And we're just hanging on and trying to help manage the growth and the spectacular rise in residences and businesses. And this is just part and parcel to that. And it's an anchor on the Civic Center Plaza. That's what we've got here. It's not just the city hall. It's, it's the library, it's the lecture hall, it's the park, all of it. It, it's just a capstone to it. So I just think it's spectacular. And having lived here for, since 1969, and see this, what's happened in this town, the only thing to me that's, that it's like what it was when I moved here is the harbor, essentially, because that has not really changed, except for the homes in the harbor. But the entire town, my little street on Holly Lane is just absolutely transformed. And I just think this city, I was really upset when they tore down the China House because I thought, that's history. But this city is not about history. This city is about vision forward. It's about moving forward. It's about building, making better all the time. It's happening with our public works, it's happening with our utilities, all of our departments. It's extraordinary. And as citizens, we deserve to have a lecture hall like this, a place where people can gather, where ideas can be exchanged, and people can learn more about the world and about what's going on. And when it's live, it's really impactful. It's a lot different than in a theater. So when we have real people up there who are experts in their fields giving lectures, it's, it's really something. And with the kind of folks we have in this town who are interested in ideas, this is going to be a boon to them. So I'm just an unreserved advocate for this, for this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grant, Councilmember Grant?
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to thank Councilmembers Wigan, I'm sorry, not Wigan, it's Councilmembers Kleiman and Blum for their work on the MOU. I know that it was a lot of work over the holidays, as well as staff, Yolanda and the rest of our staff, because it was a lot of work over the holidays, and it's greatly appreciated. And it is wonderful to be sitting here tonight, knowing that we did accomplish so much and be able to get to this point over a very critical time period. We've had really comprehensive overview We've had really comprehensive overview of this project over the last couple of days, coming in from residents, from members of the Finance Committee, other individuals in the community organizations, and a lot of viewpoints have been expressed, and that's probably the best thing that's come out of this process, is that we have had the opportunity to, you know, look at what's going on in the community and understand concerns and maybe address those concerns so that we can hit the sweet spot and make something wonderful happen. There are two primary concerns. Can we afford it? And if we need it? And both answers are yes. The city does have sufficient cash reserves to fund this lecture hall. We don't need to borrow money, as I wholly agree with Councilmember Blum. I wouldn't be in favor of this project if it meant that we were going to somehow jeopardize our reserves or would be required to borrow. We do have sufficient reserves to pay for this, as well as satisfy concerns that Councilmember Kleinman brought up, that were brought up by the community, of other things that we highly prioritize, like public safety and homelessness, recruiting the highest level of staff for our community, maintaining our environment. We have sufficient money and reserves and revenue to take care of all of those ambitious objectives and build this lecture hall. There isn't a this or that involved here, and I think that we've seen that kind of information come to us from current and former members of the Finance Committee, from members of staff have talked about how we could afford this project. It's a given in my mind that it is affordable for our city. So can we afford it? Yes. Do we need it? This lecture hall will serve as a cultural hub for generations to come. Many people have said that. It will represent an extension of what we already have, which is a world-class central library. We're going to have an extension of that library and a place for people in our city, not only today, but for generations, to come and enjoy community, education, camaraderie, and really reap the benefit of the small group of people in the foundation that they have brought to our city. Newport Beach has always invested in more than just the bare needs. We've always done that, and we take into account the value of the wants. We don't satisfy every want, but we look at what the value of those wants are. The best example of that is the Central Library. It isn't a need. As somebody who was here long ago said, we had small satellite libraries around the city, and it was a heavy lift to get people to understand that having the Central Library was an important piece of infrastructure for our community on a number of levels. We've built community centers, sports facilities, animals, we take care of animal services, but the most revered institution in our city is the Central Library. Hundreds of thousands of people come to our Central Library every year. It's the best and highest use that our city has, other than the beaches and the harbor. It's the most important piece of infrastructure we have, and we're going to take this opportunity to add to it, to make it better and to serve our community better. Plainly put, people and businesses want to be in Newport Beach for exactly that reason, because it's safe and because our infrastructure is the best of the best. We offer a lot to people who come here to live and work and visit. We have a legacy of public-private partnerships. I love them. I've been involved with a number of them. Oasis Senior Center, the Junior Guards Facility, our animal shelter, even the Central Library was a public-private partnership. These have all been highly successful endeavors and have added great value to our city. I wouldn't have changed any of those decisions, including this city hall, as Mayor Blum said. A former Mayor Blum said. Do we need to be conservative in our approach, as many have expressed here and in emails and in testimony today? Absolutely, we need to be conservative in our approach. We need to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and this has been vetted over and over and over by a number of councils over the years, and appropriate value has been seen to be provided and to serve our residents with this project. We're not mired in litigation, like many cities in California are. We don't have any crippling debt, and we're looking at increases in revenue, not downfalls. So we can afford it and we need it. We want to use it in the way that it should be used, to educate and enrich our community. Half the cost is going to be paid by the Foundation. That's a great deal. This is not going to be a liability, it's going to be an asset to our community. We're going to get something for half the price, that, half the value, the full value, it's going to come to our city. I guess I just want to say I am all in to build on Newport Beach's legacy of prosperity and culture and community, and I hope that many of you who have had misgivings after hearing everything here today will agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Stapleton.
I think it's important to take a moment of perspective. Like many of you during the holidays, I recently got back from some international travel, and how lucky we are to be sitting here talking and discussing a project of this nature in our beloved Newport Beach. I want to begin by recognizing the importance of a project like this. I'm interested in creating a cultural arts center of Newport Beach, a sculpture garden, a lecture hall, a performing arts center. You know, thank you to our residents, our donors, the staff who put their time and money and energy into this project. Thank you to Jill and Larry Tucker for all your time that you've put into this project, and to the leadership in the Library Foundation as well, and to the formidable duo, Lauren and Noah, thank you for your time on this committee. This is what makes this Newport Beach. It's so many great community leaders coming together to fight the good fight. I want to see a project like this happen, but unfortunately not in this current capacity. I've always appreciated good public-private partnership. I'm sympathetic for the time that's been put into this project and working on this over a decade now. I only wish I was involved from the very beginning. I think I could have been helpful with some different ideas. There's no doubt the scope of this project, from where it started at $8 million to where we are today at $24 million, has grown quite a bit. And because of this, my feelings have not changed since my comments in November, when we discussed this in our study session. I feel the need to reimagine this project from the original intended use, expand the potential community uses, more of a cultural arts center. In my vision, the lecture series would remain the top spot as the host of the building because you guys have raised 100% of the funds to date. But unfortunately for me, once I toured the theater, our community theater on Cliff Drive, I just can't get the potential collaboration out of my head. We've got this building, we took in the 1970s, an old church that sits right next to John Wayne Park on Cliff Drive, and in my opinion, has some of the best views in the entire city and not one window facing the harbor. It seems to me a perfect marriage between two auditoriums to put them at City Hall in the same building. I understand the majority in November did not feel that way, and I understand that. Just for me, to look at a project in our FFP with staff, looking at the facility finance plan for that community theater to be torn down and rebuilt at the price tag of $10 million, we're talking about a $24 million project here, is there a way, I believe there would be a way to reimagine the project here where we can bring both auditoriums together? I think it'd be short-sighted to build two separate auditoriums in the span of 10 years on two different sides of the city. What an opportunity to give something to the West Side and free up a part of, a parcel of land, I think, that has some of the best views in the city. So I don't think it'd be wise to build two separate auditoriums. That being said, I look forward to moving forward collaboratively with whatever the majority decides. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wagan.
Yeah, Kat kind of had my tongue tonight on this. I really want to speak, but I'm kind of, I've heard a lot of our comments from council colleagues, and I like what they've had to say. I was texting earlier today with one of my really conservative friends, and, you know, when I ran for council, I have a conservative approach to things, and, you know, then we have these discussions about spending city money, and we want to be as fiscally prudent as possible, and so I was, you know, having this discussion, and my friend said, look, we must have government to help create opportunity in this space and is an example of that for the community. This is what Reagan said in his first inauguration speech. He says that now, so there will be no misunderstanding, it is not my intention to do away with government. It is rather to make it work, work for us, not over us, not stand by our side, not ride on our back. Government can and must provide opportunity, not smother it, foster productivity, not stifle it. So, you know, that did hit me hard, maybe he wasn't even envisioning a library lecture hall, my guess is he probably wasn't at all, but, you know, when we have this public-private partnership and a significant amount of resources that are citizens, not random folks, not people from all over, Newport Beach citizens interested in this, I have to really embrace that. You know, there were some comments about all these other theaters we can use, and just, you know, holistically, locally, I reached out to my wife, who's a school board member for Newport Mesa, and I asked her, I said, well, why can't we just use CDM and Newport Harbor? And she said, well, first off, they're classrooms during the day, so they teach theater, they do music, they're used during the day to teach. And then at night, they're booked, and they're booked nearly all year long. The winter and the spring, my kid's elementary school can't even do a performance, they have to go to Huntington Beach to do it. They don't need the Barclay Theater, they don't need something fancy, they just need a stage and some sound. So I think there's opportunity here for a whole host of things. I know the tourism industry and the hotels could simply walk here if they want to from Vaya or Pendry with their clientele and hear a corporate speaker or hear an annual report or any type of thing that comes on the business sector. There's a drive for this, and I think it's an economic engine. And so, you know, I envision these things happening, not just the lecture series. Part of our job is to help improve the quality of life for our residents, and I believe that this does, and it will increase property tax and our, and not increase property tax, sorry, increase the value of our homes that will generate more property tax, which will help pay for this long term. So I'm fully on board, and I want to see this, I hope that there's no change orders. I hope this gets, but it's government, we know it's going to happen, but let's be responsible. I think we've got this, I think we have a great foundation, and I think they have the drive to raise the money and make this be a key asset for our community. So I guess Kat didn't get my tongue. Thank you for letting me speak. Mr. Mayor, it's back to you.
Thank you. Yep, you're right, it is government, and I think Reagan had a quote about that, but probably not about a lecture hall. One of the things about the passion that folks have shown on this one, the passion has been going on for quite some time, and the folks who support this, and I don't think I've ever questioned the proponents' belief that this is in the best interest of the city. It's clear, it's a, you know, it's a strongly held belief by good people, and I appreciate that. I will say that some of us up here have been opposed to this, once the number got high enough, have had our motivations questioned by people who know better. So to those folks, you know better. But, you know, at some point, projects, project costs get too large to allow other priorities to be forfeited. We go through a budget process every single year, and as part of that budget process, we know that a dollar spent in one area is a dollar spent, is not a dollar spent in another area, so of course, it means that any amount that we budget above for this or spending above this means that there are going to be priorities that are not going to be funded properly. Here, I was on the council for this, we originally budgeted this at $4 million at this, for the city contribution. The scope expanded, we went up to $6.5 million, and with a split council, we said, okay, we'll continue to move forward. $6.5 million was supposed to be the ceiling of expenses for the city on this amenity, and the reason it's supposed to be a ceiling on an amenity is because infrastructure and services from a city are supposed to take priority over amenities, including, by the way, amenities that can be found in neighboring cities and can also be found within our own city, as Councilmember Kleinman mentioned. The problem is the approval that we're going to, it sounds like we're going to have, considering, I've heard four yeses up here, that's going to require us to allocate an additional $5 million as a floor. And because the half-promised at the beginning of this process hasn't been raised yet, another $5 million is going to be allocated according to the staff report that we're reading. So that's $10 million being allocated tonight that was not budgeted as part of the regular budget process. So that's $10 million plus $6.5 million unavailable for increasing labor costs at a time when our labor, our labor agreements are going to be up next year. Those are the labor agreements that you all care about, police and fire and every other employee in our city. That's $10 million plus $6.5 million unavailable for responding to homelessness or short-term lodging complaints or the myriad neighborhood improvement projects accomplished using surplus funds, which is exactly what we've done every year, using the half of the surplus money that comes, and this is going to deplete that surplus immediately because the structural surplus in our budget was less than $5 million, which is, you know, which obviously, just the $5 million allocation from our city on this one is going to be above. And our finance director testified in November, this will deplete the capital reserves the next few years, given the other infrastructure projects listed in the staff report from November. It's going to require us then to use the surpluses that we would normally be using toward neighborhood enhancement projects across the city to backfill our capital reserves, because of course we need to do that, because that's the fiscally responsible thing to do if we approved it tonight. We know we have a survey of our parks coming up. The preliminary estimates that I'm aware of show that we're underfunding our parks. We're not only underfunding our parks a little bit, it's going to require seven figures worth of additional expenditure in each of the next seven, in each of the next five years. Those are parks used across the entire city by everyone. We're talking about increasing technology in our police department. We've also, for years, been talking about the idea of a West Side Community Center, which we have said repeatedly is too expensive. Even if we were to make something similar to the Newport Coast Community Center, if it were something in the range of 11,000 square feet, at a respectable 850 square feet, which is about a third of the cost of this lecture hall, $850 per square foot, that's actually almost exactly the amount of money that we're increasing our obligation by tonight. So if you're on the West Side and you've been looking to us and asking us for a community center, the cost, that $10 million that we could potentially be using to do that is going toward this in addition to the amount that we had originally had as our ceiling. And unfortunately, we have absolutely seen over the last week what happens when a project of this scope and financial magnitude does not go to a community survey. When many of our residents found out about this project for the first time last week, we got an outpouring of negative reaction. We, we've also heard from a handful of people that all those folks were duped by an email. They couldn't be bothered to do their own research and therefore just relied on whatever was sent to them to express their opposition. I would recommend, before making that accusation against our residents who sent emails in, that you go ahead and read the hundreds of emails that we received on this. We received more emails by quite a bit in opposition to this than in support of this. And there was not a single form email sent to us among those hundreds of opposition emails. And in fact, many of them were really well thought out, and I'm just going to list a couple of them. For example, I think we should all recognize that the effort and work that Tom Collier does for our city is great. He provided a point-by-point response to many of the advocates' arguments. I'm going to quote this because, I'm going to read from it because I want to quote him. He said, "Other city projects have higher need and benefit to the residents of Newport, including street repairs, expansion of fire, and police services." I agree. He concluded that the world, quote, "The world is in an increasing position of uncertainty, and the fiscal and fiduciary prudent action for city council will be to provide for city reserve funds in event of future revenue decline." I also agree. It's also worth noting, by the way, that the state of California is projecting a $68 billion, with a B, billion-dollar deficit in its upcoming budget year. There are people, absolutely, up in Sacramento and other places, who are anxious to avoid cuts in state spending, who are going to be coming up with proposals to make sure that state, that revenue stays with the state and does not go to local governments like ours. As you might recall, for some of you, when we have faced past times of economic difficulty, the state does exactly that. You might remember when the state shut down all of the redevelopment agencies just so they could get the funds from those agencies, and I would suggest, don't even think for a second that a well-off community like Newport Beach won't be right on their radar. And I think prudence dictates that we be prepared for that, and one way to prepare is to not spend imprudently. I would also recommend reading the email that came in from Stephanie Misaki-Shots, who lives in Newport Coast, who also worked for a decade in the LA County Community Development Department. She sent in a lengthy email noting that she's attended numerous events in the Friends Meeting Room, including the Witty Lectures, Library Live, Medicine in the Backyard, concerts, et cetera. She was still opposed because, quote, "Any public funds using our local tax dollars to fund this proposed project does not serve the city's public interests, should be viewed as a needed neighborhood enhancement benefiting the most people." She concluded by noting, quote, "I strongly believe that our city's funding priorities should focus on delivering basic public services to maintain and enhance public safety, public infrastructure, and water quality while preserving healthy reserves and reducing any long-term debt like the unfunded pension liability due to the poor investment performance by CalPERS." And there were literally hundreds of other people who took their time to remind us that we represent them and have an obligation to maximize their tax dollars just as much as we represent the 300 people who as we represent the 300 people who are going to fit in this lecture hall. Until the last few days, we hadn't heard from any of them. Because this hadn't, we hadn't gone out on a community survey. We hadn't told them, "We will be spending $10 million more," or in the best-case scenario, $5 million plus change orders that could be spent in other ways. "What would you like us to do with that money?" And we owe it to them to listen to them and be straight with them that spending their money on this means we're not going to be spending money on their priorities, and a lot of the ones we've stated before are ours. Because, look, if there's nothing more that you'd like to see enhanced about our city with the money, with this money, than putting it toward this lecture hall, then this is an easy vote. But if originally, if the originally budgeted $6.5 million plus the extra $10 million for this amenity cuts into priorities for service and infrastructure that matter to residents that we represent, which it absolutely does, then you got to vote no. And that's exactly what I'm going to be doing tonight. So we're going to go ahead. Mr. Harp, when we try, when we make a motion up here, or whoever's going to make the motion up here, I think it's going to be important that you make sure the terms are right, especially given that we have a contingent agreement from the, from the foundation. So what do we need to resolve up here in terms of the MOU before we make a vote?
So I think the outstanding issues, some of the naming rights were inadvertently left out, require compliance with special land use restrictions, and then there's the rent provision that was proposed by the foundation. And Assistant City Attorney Yolanda Summerhill has the specific language, if you need any of the specific language.
I'm going to go ahead and move for staff recommendation with the additional language as mentioned by the city attorney.
I'll second.
All right. And that includes the cap without the fee study being done beforehand. Is that correct?
That is my motion, yes.
And you understood that to be the case? Okay. All right. Let's go ahead and vote.
With Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protem Stapleton, and Councilmember Kleiman voting no, the motion carries for three.
All right. So we're going to move into item number 14. I suspect that I know how this one's going to go. Does anyone need a staff report? Nope. All right. We'll go out to public comment on item number 14. If you are in favor of this, do not snatch defeat from the jaws of victory. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jill Johnson Tucker, and obviously I've been involved in this for many years. I just wanted to address one thing as you're considering what to do right now, and that is the fundraising. We have 7.1 available right now, but a lot of, we've almost got 9 million in pledges, and I know you can't count on that, but most of those are people that have already started paying off their pledges, so they feel really secure to me. I'm chairing the capital campaign, and a lot of our major donors are in the room, and a lot of my friends who are major fundraisers were in the room. I don't know if they've started filtering out. But I, I just want to reassure you that we're there to make sure this happens. And any question of our fundraising abilities, I hope you feel comforted. It's two years out, and I think we can see it happen. I do hope that if this passes tonight, we'll have the support of the council the way the Junior Guards Building did, because I think having council get behind a project helped them in their fundraising. And it's been a little bit challenging for these last few years to know that we didn't yet have city approval, and so you're trying to sell a project that really isn't a project. So we've only been in the quiet phase, looking forward to going public with it, and we hope that you'll help us close that gap, because if that happens, I think it'll be pretty easy. I also wanted to address Councilmember Blom, who doesn't go to lectures and hope that he does go to maybe jazz, jazz music performances. I think that looks like something he'd go to. I hope he goes to classic movie nights where there's a food truck. I, you know, there, the options are just endless, and it's not a lecture hall, so don't come to the 50 lectures, but come to all the rest of the stuff. It's going to be a civic auditorium. And it's not just for lectures, so we'll give you a pass on that one. And I also would like to address Councilmember Stapleton. And we went pretty far down the road in trying to see if there was a way to turn this into a fully, fully functional performing arts center. It was a challenge, but it's really close, because we have enough backstage area to do small theater productions. We have a flexible floor that allows dance productions. Turns out, the depth of our stage is the same as the Newport Theater Arts Center has. So the kind of productions that they put on, we can put on. What we can't have happen is have a whole set put up and remain up for a month or a month and a half, which is the way they operate right now. So that's why that was difficult, and I'm really sorry, because I think we went pretty far down the road to try to figure that out. Let's see. I think that's all I had to say. I really wasn't planning on speaking, so thank you all. I know this has been a long, hard road to get here, and I hope if it passes that we all make it something that we're proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. The item before you, as I understand it, actually is the award of the construction contract in selecting the lower bidder, lowest bidder from the current set of bidders. This follows on a previous bidding that the city did, and the lowest bidder now is higher than nearly all of those at the previous effort. And not only are the bids higher, but the engineer's estimate for what the construction cost would be is higher than it was at the previous bidding. So I have not heard any clarification of why the engineer's estimate went up, I believe when the bids were rejected or when these were opened. And Mayor Protem O'Neill said he understood why. I'm not sure, so I am hoping there might be clarification that the construction project you are voting on tonight, is it exactly the same as the project that was previously bid on? Were any changes made to in an effort to lower the cost? If not, why is the engineer's estimate higher? Usually when you rebid something, you try to lower the cost of it, then raise it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right. Bring it on back. Any discussion? You have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Councilmember Wagon makes the motion. Try a second. Second by Councilmember Blom. Let's go ahead and vote.
With Councilmember Kleiman, Mayor Protem Stapleton, and Mayor O'Neill voting no, the motion carries for three.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the motion's reconsideration. Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Mr. Wagon.
There was just some mention earlier from Mr. Mosher about the dates in November. I think we agreed to do the 12th and the 19th.
We did, and I believe that I had unfortunately combined the two. I believe that I had accidentally made a motion that included the number while also saying that we need to adopt the one that avoids the one for Thanksgiving week. So that was probably on me for inartfully saying it, but I would not recommend a motion for reconsideration. This, this got to the intent, and I believe we all understood it.
We can administratively be fine.
Okay.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Tonight, we're going to be a journey in the memory of Phil Smoot. Phil Smoot grew up in Long Beach, California, and attended the University of Arizona, finishing his degree at Long Beach State. He met Colleen Conway on a blind date, and they were married in 1959. They recently celebrated their 64th anniversary. Phil served in the U.S. Air Force for five years. Phil and Colleen raised their three children in Tustin. Phil enjoyed a long and successful career in the electronics industry, ultimately serving as the chief executive officer of Nelco Products, Inc., and executive vice president and chief operating officer of Park Electrochemical Corporation. Outside of his professional life, Phil was always active in this community. He was a Little League coach and chief of the nation for Indian guides. He served on the board of directors for the Tustin Boys Club, serving two years as president. He was fleet captain for Newport Harbor Lido 14s, and he was privileged to serve as the yachting deputy director of administrative services for the 1984 Summer Olympics. Phil and Colleen were members of Balboa Yacht Club for over two decades. They sailed their Lido 14 for years and later enjoyed cruises on their Cal-27. After moving to the water, they traded in their sailboats for Duffy, taking regular sunset cruises on Newport Bay. Phil passed away on September 27, 2023, at the age of 86. He's survived by his wife, Colleen, his sister Sally, his son Phil, his wife, and Phil's wife Barb, their daughter Kathy, and husband Sam, son Dan, and his wife Kim, nine grandchildren, and one great grand, or great grandson. Phil's life was celebrated on December 19, I'm sorry, December 9, 2023, and with that, we stand adjourned.